All the way to Perry Street, it was right, right there.
Yeah, it was, but depending on the time, yeah, the traffic. But yeah, and she's still using those, and I'm sure it's just not for everybody. And he works for Support Authority, but he actually, his main job is supporting employees.
Really?
Sort of like made a niche for himself.
That's a great place to be.
So he's like really good at, you know, trying to connect like traffic.
Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Board of Princeton. It's Thursday, December 14th, 2017, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2017 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the second day of December 2016. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 9, 2016 edition of the Princeton Packet. Could you call the roll for me, please?
Mr. Cohen? He's here.
Present.
Ms. Crammella?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Ollman?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunny?
Here.
We are quorum.
Thank you very much. Are there any announcements, anybody? I'd just like to say that this is probably Fern's last meeting with us, is that right?
Yes.
And that's a very sad occasion because we've enjoyed having Fern on the board and we're going to miss her. Thank you very much for all your contributions.
But please be happy for me.
Right, well, we can do that, too. All right, so.
You know, it's likely that this is my last day, too. As you know, we have three, we have David, and Tim, and me are all going to be on the council next year, so one of us is not going to be on the Planning Board, and it's likely to be me. So I wanted just to say I've enjoyed my time here, and I might come back.
Well, that's a good idea.
We were gonna do a rock, paper, scissors to see who got to stay, so.
Oh, dear, well, changes, changes, changes.
Yes, thank you.
But thank you for all your contributions, Jenny. Now, we do have this set of findings of fact, which is enormously long, which was mailed to all of you about 10 days ago. This is 775 Princeton LLC, and it's from October 5th. It was a major subdivision with variances. I think most of you got this. Were there any comments, corrections, anybody?
I'll move approval. Tim Quinn.
Okay. Mr. Quinn has moved for approval. Is there a second?
Noted, Trotman.
Mrs. Trotman has seconded it. Are there any further comments, questions? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
And I abstained, Gail Ollman, I wasn't present.
We have sort of automatic deletion of people who weren't present when these are, when these are finally printed up, so that will be noted. Right, that brings us to the hearings this evening. The first hearing is ML7 Witherspoon 2 LLC. It's a minor site plan with variances and historic preservation plan, and it's for 1214, 14 and 1/2, and 16 Witherspoon Street, block 20.01, lots 36, 35, and 34. Mr. Solo, can we swear you in and ask you to explain all of this to us?
You know, could I interrupt, because my mother just texted me that we're not on TV.
Did your mother have any idea how we could fix this?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name for the record.
Lee Solo, town planner. Thank you, good evening. As the chair indicated, this is a minor site plan with variance and preservation plan approval. I'm going to label this drawing as PB1. It is Sheet 4 of 8. It's the site plan sheet in your packet, and I've colored it up to sort of highlight some of the application materials. Little background, the subject property contains three lots. It's located on the west side of Witherspoon, between Nassau Street and Whole Fish. As you're looking at the exhibit, north is to the top, so Nassau Street is down at the bottom, and Whole Fish Street would be up at the top off of the subject map. 1214 Witherspoon Street, for those, and you can probably see the drawing or the photo that's up there, but that's Small World Coffee on the first floor, and then it has, I think it's three apartments on the upper floors. 14 and 1/2 Witherspoon is the former Army-Navy store, and that has that former retail use on the first floor, and then the upper floor is where offices. And 16 Witherspoon Street is where currently Lisa James is, and that has three apartments on the upper floors. All three buildings appear to be three stories, but as you look at the packet that's in front of you, you'll see that while the front edges are all three, four-story, the building steps down with some one and some two-story sections as well as you go towards the rear of the property. The three properties will be combined and have a land area of 9,429 square feet. The existing buildings have a combined floor area of 12,622 square feet. Surrounding uses, this is in the downtown zone, it's a mixture of retail, offices, restaurants, and apartments. The application before you is to consolidate those three lots into a single lot, demo approximately 865 square feet of the rear of 14 and 1/2. And on my exhibit, what I've done is the red hatched area, there is a single-story building that extends currently, and they're gonna demolish that, and then they are going to build a parking lot in the back that will have six spaces as well. A new storefront, and I'm showing that in this little yellow color is the new building, it's a one-story addition, it's basically a doorway to provide access up to the building, will also be constructed, that's at 14 and 1/2. And then a, and that's a second-floor addition, shown here in yellow, of approximately 836 square feet, will be added to the rear of 16 Witherspoon Street. That space will be accessed through 14 and 1/2 Witherspoon Street, so there is a connection, it spills over, so you have the two, three properties. Was not able to show you, but along the rear of the property line in here, there's a new fire escape that's coming in. As you look closely at the map, you'll see where, points to where the footings are. And we're pointing that out, because you'll see in the engineer's report, he does have a concern how that fire escape will impact two of the parking spaces, and we'd like the applicant to address that. As I indicated, the property is in the CBD, the Central Business District, as well as the Central Business Historic District. There are a few variances that are associated with this, and I'd like to just briefly go over those. The first is from 17A 387, which requires a four-foot offset for parking, and as you can see, portions of the parking are right at the property line or just off of it, an encroach on that four-foot setback. Section 17A 310B requires 60 square feet of open space for each residential unit. The conversion of what was a backyard for that unit, so they're losing open space, they never fully complied, and were not required to, but we are losing a little bit of open space in order to create the parking. From Section 17A 310B, which requires a smaller side yard of 12 feet in the addition to the north side of the building, is setback about five feet. It's a little hard to see on this exhibit, but there is a little bit of a setback, and it is five feet. And then finally, 17A 318, which requires a loading dock be provided, and there has never been a dedicated loading dock provided for this use. There are loading docks along Witherspoon Street that are used by all the stores in the area. Staff finds that the rear addition and the variances that are being requested for it will not really change the character of the area, as the building currently doesn't have a side yard setback. Many of the buildings in this area are built to the property line or very close to it, so it's not gonna change the character. The area in the back currently is a, in this portion here from where the building being demolished, is a service yard, the dumpsters, some HVAC equipment, and then again, you had a green area, real courtyard that will become part of the parking. So it's a change, but it's a change that really the public doesn't see, because they don't really have access to that area. We've asked that the applicant address the impact of losing that small green area, and in fact, how it relates to the zoning ordinance, which does require green areas for apartments. There are a number of loading zones, as I pointed out, on Witherspoon Street. The area has been served by those for many years, so we don't really see a substantial negative impact by not providing a loading area as well. We've asked the applicant to address any traffic impacts from the proposed expansion. By way of other comments, we wanted to point out that a number of the advisory committees have requested additional bike parking be provided. However, there does not appear to be a suitable location without losing vehicular parking, so if you were to put it on the Witherspoon side, we're gonna lose a meter space. If you put it to the rear, they would lose one of the required six parking spaces that are back there. So it's a trade-off. I'd like to hear from the applicant, and ultimately, that would be a board decision on whether or not to lose at least a parking space in the back. We've asked that the applicant confirm that the rear parking area will be used solely by employees and residents in the building. The design is very tight, and you'll see that in the engineer's report. Mr. West is here, and he can elaborate if he wants, but getting in and out is gonna be a little bit tricky, it may require some maneuvering. That's not totally unusual in the downtown, but we did feel we needed to point it out. Does it meet all the codes, and is it designed the best, you know, the way you would want it? Probably not, but this is not an unusual circumstance in the downtown, especially if it's limited to employees or residents in the apartments. People who use it all the time will begin to understand how it works. There is a concern, there's a lot of HVAC equipment in the back, and we are concerned what's gonna happen with cars backing up if they hit that. So we've asked the applicant to address some of the parking as well. The land use engineer has a concern regarding the conflict between the two spaces and the fire escape, which is in this area here, which we outlined before, and we'd like the applicant to address how that's going to work. We're requesting that if the board so chooses to approve this, that a condition be that a written trash plan be submitted for review and approval of the engineer, and that trash, recycling, and compostables must not be left on the street overnight. As you've probably heard us say before, that's a constant theme, we don't want the garbage overnight on the street if it's brought out to Witherspoon. They may have made some arrangements to have it come out on Palmer Square East through their access easement. I probably should have pointed that out. Palmer Square East is located here, to the rear of the property, there's a row of buildings, and a access easement provides access into the parking lot and to the rear of the building. I apologize, I should have probably covered that earlier. The municipal land use engineer advises that a stormwater management plan is required to address the slight increase in impervious coverage, and if you approve that, he's asked that you make that a condition of the approval. No new landscaping is early proposed, the site is almost 100% impervious. I'd like to just briefly summarize the various advisory committee reports that we received. The first was from the PEC, and again, they've indicated that they'd like to see covered bike storage in the rear parking area, as well as an EV charging station. Suggests that the applicant provide adequate soil mitigation for the pear tree in the front, to use permeable pavers in the rear of the lot, that any kitchen provide for organic waste disposal, that they comply with all recycling requirements, use water sense and energy star appliances, that they explore solar and/or a green roof, that all light fixtures be LED. They've suggested that the storefront satisfy the ASHE 90.1 2016 air infiltration criteria that illuminated signs should be on timers, that they consider an enclosed vestibule to get in and out of the building, and that they use green building materials whenever they can. The Traffic Safety Committee suggests that, again, bike parking be provided in the rear. HPC did review this, as they indicated, it is in a historic district. They supported the overall concept and recommend that the lots be consolidated, no loading space be required, that landscaping be installed in the rear to soften the appearance of the six parking spaces, that the AC units be screened, and that any landscaping that is installed come back to HPC for review and approval. That's a summary. Jack or Derek, before I ask for board questions, did you wanna add anything?
I don't have anything to add. You covered it.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Derek, why don't you, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
So sworn, could you each please state your full name for the record?
John M. West, I'm the land use engineer.
Derek Brager, zoning officer.
And Lee did cover everything.
With that, I don't know if the board has questions for me or the staff, or we'll turn it over and hear from the applicant.
Yeah, I just wanted, Julie, she's, she is here?
Julie's not here.
She's not here, okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Ms. Ollman?
A couple of sort of anomalies, oh, sorry, a couple of sort of anomalies in the staff report. You say specifically there's no landscaping, but two, at least two of our outside advisory committees recommended that native plans be used, and, I mean, I sometimes wonder if they've looked at the plans, because I can't see any place for landscaping. Anyhow, we can, we can deal with that, and maybe the applicant has some ideas about where he's gonna put it. But shouldn't, if it is put in, shouldn't it come to the landscaping subcommittee rather than the Historical Preservation Commission?
Maybe a little bit of both. They do have landscape criteria now for historic preservation, and they were looking most, at least HPC was looking to soften the parking in the back, probably something on the walls, because you're correct, there isn't a whole lot of room to put anything.
But there was also a suggestion of a vegetated roof, which...
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think we can make that happen, but, but if it is. The other, the other thing is the question of covered bicycle parking, which I think at some point, maybe not with this, maybe it's not possible, I can't imagine where you'd put it, and I think we do, they obviously do need some parking places. But maybe we need to think long-term about someplace downtown with covered parking for many bicycles, for workers and others.
I agree with you, I think we need to look, it's not part of this application, but also for loading, and I think Jack mentioned it when we had the post office in front of us. The town has begun to look at loading areas, I think we need to hold downtown to look at bicycle parking, loading, and balancing that with the need for vehicular parking and the revenue that the meters generate.
Yeah, is there bicycle parking at the garage?
There is.
There is.
I believe we approved that.
I mean, is there?
It's in the works if it's not there yet.
Right, I don't think it's been installed yet, but it's approved.
But that, that would be one possibility, yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's it.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if there's any precedent also for, I know it wouldn't be covered bike parking, but it looks from the photographs that there is potential for some additional parking, bike parking on the sidewalk in front of the properties, and, you know, has the municipality ever accepted a donation of bike racks in the, in the public right-of-way?
Well, we have, and if the board wanted to require, you can see in the, on the photo, that's not my exhibit, there's one, you could require it. I think it's a good idea, I'm just not certain how much room you really have there for the additional bike parking. There's a lot of pedestrian activity there, and that would be the concern that I would have without carefully looking at it.
Mr. Quinn?
Lee, what about, say, hoops on the meters in front? So there are two, there's one meter stand, and then there's another one down, and a lot of dense downtowns have hoops that are stuck onto the midway through the pole on the meter that serve as bike parking.
I'm gonna defer to Jack, he seems to have an opinion.
Well, a suggestion, maybe not an opinion. I know the municipal engineer is looking at the streetscape on Nassau Street, and I know that one of the projects coming up will be the streetscape along Witherspoon, so I think if the applicant agrees to work with the municipal engineer on putting some type of bike rack at along Witherspoon Street.
Right, because I think we're also planning a bike corral on Witherspoon down on the other block, but it's still somewhat close.
And I think you have some bike parking sort of across the way in the access easement to the parking on the other side. I believe there's some...
It's true there is, but there really isn't.
There's a need, yeah.
There's not adequate bike parking right in this area, so if we could add some, I think it would be benefit.
Yeah, I would have to say that, you know, anytime that I've biked to Small World, I always end up bike, parking my bike on one of those signs or the lampposts or something like that, so. I think that certainly having something on the sidewalk, a little bit more on the sidewalk, or potentially, you know, taking a whole entire parking space and providing bike parking, which I think would be beyond this application. And I also would like to chime in real quickly, that the PC certainly looks at the plans in fine detail. I know that it might seem like adding native vegetations might be kind of a silly request, but I think that there are places that you could put it, you know, say if there was a green roof, or it seems like there is space in that top-left corner. I don't know what, what's proposed for that corner, it's kind of dead space in the parking area, so, you know, certainly, potentially, there's opportunity there.
Yeah, I think we should have the applicant maybe address that, because with the fire escape coming down, there's not as much room as one would think, and I think the applicant heard the concerns about bike parking, and hopefully he can respond to that as well tonight.
Right, I just, could I just add one thing? I was disappointed in the historical report. I mean, these are three buildings that are more than, more than 100 years old, all of them with interesting histories, and there must be a reason they're in the historic district and being preserved, but there's nothing in the report that indicates that. So maybe the applicant could say something about the nature of these buildings, or you explain your project. Okay? Anyone else?
Just, yes, a couple of things. Totally agree with adding good bike parking wherever we can along Witherspoon, but I think it's needed behind the building, too, because you want a place for employees, so many of whom bike, to park all day, and you don't want employee parking along Witherspoon, you want people to be able to come and go, obviously, with their bikes, and I, too, hope that there's an opportunity for adding vegetation to this plan, because the stormwater plan, which I hope we see, could certainly add some vegetation, and we just need to be, you know, looking at ways to not add a huge amount of impervious cover, so I'll be interested, and I know this isn't huge, but relative to the site, it's significant, so I'm interested in hearing what the applicant has to say about whether they want and need all that additional parking, or whether they're just shoehorning it in to meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance.
And I'll just make one more comment about the covered bike parking, which is, there may be an opportunity within the building. You know, it does not take a lot of room to put a little storage locker with, you know, the ability to hang bicycles and on the wall and stuff like that, so it can be quite dense, and that might be a solution. Okay. Anything else?
Nothing else, thank you. We'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Lee.
Why don't I swear you're all in, at once? If you could raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed? Could you please state your full name for the record and spell your last name?
Joshua Zinder, D-I-N-D-R. Jeffrey Siegel, S-I-E-G-U-N.
Do you have a microphone? Yes, you have to get very close to it, or we can't hear you.
Matthew Connors, C-O-N-N-R-S.
I think you have to put it on. There we go. One more time. That's Matthew Connors, C-O-N-N-R-S.
You got that?
Good evening, everyone. As I said, I'm Jeffrey Siegel, I'm attorney for the applicant as well as the principal of the applicant. We acquired these three buildings in separate transactions almost two years ago, a little less than that, and I would agree, there's certainly some, some history to these buildings. The, the building at 16 Witherspoon Street, where Lisa Jones is currently occupied, and there are three apartments upstairs, actually at one time was Harry's Luncheonette, and some of you may recall that there was a fire there. I wanna say it was approximately 15 years ago or so, so what you see in, in the photographs above you and in some of the renderings that you'll see are much different than what was, the, you know, everything was completely restored and redone post that fire, as well as the interiors. The Army-Navy store has, has some interesting history in that it was, once upon a time, the firehouse for, for Princeton, and you'll hear Joshua talk a little bit about some of the architectural details and how we're addressing those and bringing them back. And the Small World Coffee building, as you've heard, not only houses that business, but apartments upstairs as well. So our, our goal when we acquired these properties was really to, and we've done this on a number of properties in town, really to focus on the historical nature of some of the properties, to invest quite a lot of money into them, to bring them up to code and back to a quality that hadn't previously been. As of this time, the apartments above Small World Coffee have been renovated, they were, they were quite awful at the time we purchased them, and, and I would say, you know, it's been a significant improvement, and we've also done some improvements to some of the other interior spaces, and what you'll hear about tonight are our thoughts on how we'd like to improve the exterior spaces, not only in terms of what they look like physically from the street, but how we can really make them more usable for businesses and for tenants as well. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Joshua.
Hello, I'm Joshua Zinder, I'm an architect here in town, and I'll take you through the design that we intend for this project. So to begin with, here you see the elevation focusing on the Army-Navy building, and Lisa Jones on one side and Small World Coffee on the other. Some other street views showing all three buildings in their entirety together. Close-up on the Army-Navy building, the Army-Navy building, as it explains in... Close-up on the Army Navy building, the Army Navy building, as it explains in the historic report from HPC, has some significant historic, being the old hook-and-ladder building for the town, for the borough. And in the early '60s, it was taken over and became the Army Navy building, and the aluminum storefront that you see now was placed in the front of it, a historic arch that went over where the fire trucks went in and out, was removed to stabilize the structure, all the masonry above. And so that's what you see today. We're going to try to bring back a little bit of the historic character of the building. Here you see, in the back, looking from Palmer Square toward the three properties, the only property you can actually see from the public right-of-way is the Small World property, Small World Building. So that's what these two images are in the back, viewed from the public way. Here you see an aerial from above all three buildings. You see that the hook-and-ladder building, the Army Navy store, extends as a single-story back behind the Lisa Jones property. And behind the Lisa Jones property is what is effectively a yard that's trapped by the building. Interesting thing is that nobody can actually access this unless you walk out of the back of Lisa Jones, so the apartments have no access to it, there's no way to get from an apartment down to that lot. And furthermore, the adjacent property owner erected an eight-foot-high fence rail along the property line, which now prevents people from egressing out of that lot. So much of what we're doing, and you'll see this a little bit further on, is to provide a better health and safety environment for the tenants in the building. So here you see an aerial from above, identifying the three lots in question, the three properties in question, zooming in a little bit. So what we're basically doing here is we're taking the back of the Army Navy store, that one-story section, and we're rotating it. So we're going to rotate it so that it becomes, it lines up at the back of the Lisa Jones building, and we're reallocating square footage, so that behind the Lisa Jones building, it'll be a two-story addition. So here you see, looking at the three lots specifically, and then here you see, I'll just go back and forth for a bit here, so this is the existing condition. The Army Navy building extends all the way to the Palmer Square buildings, trapping the Lisa Jones property. And you can see on the right-hand side, there's a space where the Lisa Jones building ends, where the neighboring, where the neighbor built a fence that prevents egress out of that yard. By rotating the building and filling in, we now allow for safe egress out of the building, we allow for safe egress out of the yard, we provide additional parking. In the parking calculations that were reviewed with the town, it was shown that we need three parking spaces for the work that we're proposing here. We have a surplus of three parking spaces, so we're providing six, even though required to only have three. You also see on this drawing, in addition to the addition that we're doing, in the back, we're doing a very small addition in the front, which we'll zoom into, and you'll see a little bit of that in a minute. So this is the alleyway, right, I believe this, these pictures are taken right before they purchased, M.S. Southern purchased the property, and so it was a little bit cluttered. Now that there's a single property owner, it's able to be maintained much better. We did a survey around town and looked at other conditions that were similar. There are numerous places around town where there are dead-end alleys and where entryways to floors above happen, and, you know, we've identified six of them right here on this map, which is within the couple of blocks of the site that we're looking at. Here's the floor plans. Here you can see the parking lot, the parking spaces, six parking spaces identified. You also see where the fire escape lands. The reason why the fire escape is spanning over the two parking spaces, which was mentioned earlier, is because this allows us to provide egress from the Lisa Jones space out around the parking spaces and underneath the fire escape. If we were to bring down the fire escape in the space between the buildings, then we would have no egress out of the back of that one-story store. So we wanted to try to provide safe egress for everyone, so we were extending the fire escape farther back into the property. And here you see the fire escape coming from the second floor. There's a section of restaurant slash retail in the calculations for parking. This was taken as a restaurant space, it was a worst-case scenario. In the current leasing patterns in town, there's the possibility that this may become an apartment. If it becomes an apartment, then the overall square footage would stay exactly the same, and the parking would end up being reduced, just, the requirement would be reduced just slightly. The requirement for having the restaurant and retail causes a worst-case scenario with regards to the parking. So if it did become an apartment, it would be a little bit less, so the parking that we have would accommodate this additional, this apartment instead of the retail. Here you see, this is not in the scope, we're now going above it, so you see the roof plan, and then the Lisa Jones building has a fourth floor. Here you see the rear elevation of the addition, it'll just be simple stucco facade, simple windows and a door, and then you also see the fire escape spanning over the parking. And here you see the side elevation with the two parking spots that work underneath the fire escape. This is actually cut through the alleyway, so on the right side of this image, you see the little vestibule that we're creating for the entrance to the office space above. And when we look at the existing Army Navy space, there is a significant recess into the building. This allows access to a stair that goes up to the offices above, and then it also provides access to the retail. It leaves a very large display window, which for most retail today doesn't, doesn't work effectively. So what the plan is here, we will fill in, create a small vestibule in the alleyway, it'll allow us to get access up to the stair to the offices above. Now the offices will have their own door out on Witherspoon Street. We had originally looked at having it a little bit recessed back from the street, but because of the code requirements that you have to have 10-foot clear facing out onto the street, we've moved it out to the front. So it's still a little bit setback, so we maintain the historic facade, but it is effectively opening directly out onto Witherspoon Street. There is a small two-foot door in the back of this vestibule to allow for maintenance and access for the alleyway. And here you see it continues up. The detailing, we've taken some of the detail from the cornice up on the top of the building, and we've brought it down, the dentil that runs just above the first floor now and wraps around the little addition in the front. That's all that detailing is from up on the third floor, brought down. We've also brought down the arch, the two-color arch to the entryway, and helping it tie back to the original building. The brick that we plan on using, we've actually matched the brick of the historic brick, and you'll see that in a minute. Here you see a closer section where, shows that we're matching that cornice up above down below. We'll have some lighting, some new signage, it'll have an awning with a loose valance, which is the preference of the HPC. Here you see the loose, the awning will retract, and when it's fully retracted, the loose valance will be flush with the signage and with the face of the brick. The brick that's there now is stabilizing the existing facade. The intent is to remove the bright orange brick that's there and replace it with a brick that's in the color that matches the building above, and it'll be directly in line with where the existing brick is now. And here you see the existing building, and here you see the proposed storefront and new entryway. If I can go back. And then, in this image, the awning is retracted, and if we move a little bit closer, we can see in the awning pulls out. So when the awning is retracted, it's flush with the entire building. Matt, do you want to address?
Yes. Could you submit to the plane and board office a hard copy of all the slides?
We brought a copy, and we have a USB.
Excellent, let's mark that as Exhibit A1.
What did you want to mark as?
A1.
So this is the site plan, in the rear of the site, we have Palmer Square, which is on the left side.
Please.
The rear access is through a, between two buildings coming in, and parking as you is taking lefts, and it's angled parking, we're providing four angled parking and two head-on.
Can you hear him?
Proceeding, so basically this entire rear area will come into, parking is tight.
We can't, we can't hear you, you really have to talk right into it, please.
I apologize.
Yeah, and just a question.
Sure.
What function are you...
I'm a civil engineer.
Okay, I'll tell you what, and we should have qualified, Mrs. Zinder also, could you just give your qualifications really briefly?
Sure, my name is Matt Connors, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and other states. I've given testimony to this board, as well as other boards in the town. I've been practicing for over 20 years.
Right, accepted, thank you.
And just to tie to that, would you give your qualifications, Mr. Zinder?
Sure, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and a number of other states. I was Architect of the Year in the state of New Jersey in 2014. I've been practicing architecture for 26 years, yes.
I think we accept those qualifications, too.
Sure, they're now dated. So this is the site plan, Palmer Square is again to the left, and access through the rear of the site, two six parking spaces comes in, you make a left, there's four angled parking spaces and two head-on. There is three catch basins located on-site, and that's two, basically this entire area is paved, so it collects all the runoff from this area into these two rear inlets, comes down through the alleyway. There's another inlet before the connector, just to make sure that there's nothing in that alleyway that could possibly get into the building. And then the discharge goes out underneath the connector to existing drainage in the right-of-way. Which one is on the top?
One on the right.
Sweet, there we go. So in the, in the rear, in the parking areas, there was concern for the setback as well as some plantings. So what we have tried to do is, there is a triangular piece in the head of the angled parking, so we're proposing four planters. This area is basically, there's not a lot of availability of sunlight or park, or, you know, pavement or anything, so the raised planter would protect the plants better than just having it at grade. And there would be some maintenance that the owner would have to do, but it would be a better product than if we were to try to just throw plants in the back. We would use native species or, as appropriate to these planter sizes.
Has the board, or the board staff seen this before? Is this the first time you've presented?
This is, this is the first time that we're proposing it to the board.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to talk about the bicycle? We're, the lighting that we're proposing in the area is basically adjacent to the building or part of the building. You cannot, all right, the parking, the lighting that we're proposing for the site meets the town regs. Everything's basically built off of the building, it's not freestanding.
And that completes the presentation. Other questions?
Yes, go ahead, David. I wonder if you could, I didn't really see on the site plans the mechanical equipment that's in that back parking area, and I know that Lee mentioned there was some concern about automobiles hitting mechanical equipment when they're maneuvering, trying to get in and out, and I wonder if you could address that?
Yeah, I'll comment on that first, and the others may have some further comments. You can see them blocked out in this image in the back. These mechanicals are servicing the Small World Coffee space, none of the others. We do have some rooftop equipment for the other spaces. And the way that this is organized presently, there was an approval some years ago for Small World Coffee to park some cars back there, and they're sort of wedged in, in, you know, what we felt was a little bit haphazard of a, of a manner. And, and by opening up the buildings as we proposed, we're actually taking automobile flow away from how they are presently, and, and so that was part of our thinking on that as well.
Do you anticipate that cars will be trying to back out all the way to Palmer Square, or will there be room for them to do a sort of a K-type maneuver to go head out?
There's a, there's a, did you bring the, back up the traffic plan?
I can open it up, yeah.
All right, we have a traffic plan, I'll show you the movement, but, so essentially, you would be reversing out and backing between the mechanical equipment, and then K-turning, which will get you back out to Palmer Square.
Is that, excuse me, is that dumpster still going to be there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that dumpster is there presently servicing, you know, the buildings, the way they're configured now, you have different trash management plans that were happening without a whole lot of plan. For example, in 16 Witherspoon Street, where the Lisa Jones building is, because it's further down Witherspoon and there's really no access to the back, that trash tends to be left by the tenants on, on the front sidewalk before pickup. Small World Coffee has that dumpster that you see there, and then there would be some other cans that the Army Navy store would use that would run along the back area. And by opening this up, we allow all of these buildings now access to the back. So our concept for a trash plan is evolving, in fact, and we felt that, you know, not only did we want everyone to go to the back for trash rather than to the front, which this will allow, but we have not yet put together our formal trash plan, because in our experience, what we found is that really tenant-dependent, you know, depending on the use of the tenants that wind up going there, the need and the requirement for us as a, as a building owner to really maintain it neat, safe, clean, will depend a great deal on the use. For example, you know, if, if you have a retailer that's not really generating a lot of trash versus some sort of food use, it might be dramatically different. So we haven't proposed that plan yet because we wanted to really make sure it was correct, but that dumpster, as you see it now, is actually an effective location because it allows the trash trucks to back in and actually to get to it quite easily without having to, you know, upset any, any of the other areas.
It just, it just seems that it'd be very difficult to back out of there. I don't know if it's just me, especially with that dumpster there. Maybe if the dumpster was in a different location, then maybe it'd be a little bit easier, but it seems like it would be rather difficult.
Is this parking that you really want and feel strongly about, or that you're putting in the plan because that's what the ordinance calls for?
The ordinance calls for three.
Yeah.
Oh, and you're putting in more because you want...
We're putting in more, I mean, I think, you know, all of our experience has been that, you know, more parking is certainly helpful. It relieves at least some of the strain when we can use this for tenants and employees rather than them being, you know, out on the street and using up more meter space and cluttering up otherwise around town. So our concept was that if we could have, you know, the maximum number of spaces and still address our other issues, it... and still address our other issues, it made sense all around. And we think we've been able to do that.
So the ordinance requires only three spaces? Is that, I'm sorry, I'm not clear on this.
We can't, we can't hear you, Louise.
Oh, well, sorry, that's very unusual.
But we're far away, so go ahead.
So far away. What, how much, how many spaces does our ordinance require?
For the switch to the restaurant use, it's three spaces. For the switch to the, if it becomes retail space, it's two additional parking spaces.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's confusing.
Yes, Mildred. When you say additional spaces, do you mean in addition to those that are already there?
There really aren't any approved spaces there. There weren't any approved with Small World that just happened back there. The compactor was back there. So it's the additional, basically, the current use versus the additional square footage in the two uses generates either two spaces for a retail use or three for a restaurant use.
And just so I can clarify, this may have been mentioned before, I don't recall, but the intent for us is to really make these parking spaces limited only to tenants and employees. This would not be, you know, public coming in and out. So you're going to have the same people parking in these spaces all the time. They'll get very familiar and comfortable with how you come in and out. It's not like there are going to be different people navigating each time. And you'll come in in the morning and you'll stay there until you leave at the end of the day. Or perhaps if you're one of the apartment residents upstairs, your car will just be there and perhaps you'll use it on the weekends.
That sounds like the best case scenario, but these people have visitors, too.
Yes, go ahead.
I sort of lost track in the course of the application. Do you have the same number, anticipate having the same number of apartments in the new trio of places that you have now? Or will it be more or less?
It will be the same unless that new second floor that we would be adding, it's possible that that could be one additional apartment. It may be connected to the retailer/restaurant space below, but it also may be an apartment, depending on, you know, how this all evolves with leasing.
So you might have more rather than, I mean, it seems to me that we are interested in keeping apartments downtown as long as we can also find parking.
If, just to clarify, if it is an apartment, it would actually have a slightly reduced parking demand. The highest level of parking demand is for the restaurant, retail use.
Yeah, and I would add, I mean, you know, despite what the zoning ordinance would require of us, I mean, you know, we certainly approach this as trying to add as much value to the site as possible for the people that will be using it. So, you know, that sort of guides us. We may only need two or three spaces, but if we can, you know, provide more, that's helpful. You know, it's helpful.
Could you go back to the previous slide with the parking? To the one with the parking layout? With the parking? Yeah. Did you guys try doing it the other way? Where the, you know, I guess diagonal parking was on the other side? And it didn't work, that didn't work? No?
Right, I think Mildred was next. Mildred had.
I tried lots of different options.
I did, yes. Did I understand you correctly to say that you had not, you did not have a proposal or a plan for the garbage because you wanted to wait to see who the tenants were going to be?
Well, presently, there is that large compactor that's back there, and that's used. And we have, because the buildings are obviously configured the way they are right now, and the tenants have been doing what they've been doing for so long, you know, our idea is that we're going to shift everything certainly to the back and that that compactor is, you know, is sizable and can address that need. And what I really meant, depending on who comes, we understand that if you have a food user, as an example, your trash volume will be larger than if you have a retailer. And that may guide, more than anything, how often we have pickups and things of that nature so that we can manage things. We don't anticipate having, you know, some significantly larger need for dumpster-compactor area. It's really more, in our view, about how it gets organized and how it gets removed.
Thank you.
Jenny, also.
Well, it's kind of a question for, about our responsibility because I think that the parking looks really tight and it seems like they're going to be fender benders all the time. But really, is that our problem? I mean, do, I mean, is it our responsibility to, or can they have the parking be as bad as they want? Because if it is our responsibility, it looks like it's really tight. But if it's not, I don't know, I don't.
The town has design standards for parking. We're going to be giving them a variance to not meet those design standards for parking. Yeah, it's our job, I would think.
There's no variance. We're not asking for a variance for the parking.
There's setback variances for the parking and there's screening, but just the site doesn't accommodate that.
I mean, there are aisle requirements for engineering, right?
We don't actually, in the borough, they don't have aisle width requirements. They meet the parking stall size of nine by 19, but there are no standards for the aisle width.
Okay.
If I could also add, I think at a staff level, you'll see, everybody said the parking's going to be tight. It's going to be difficult. And we tried to balance that, because we had internal discussions as well, with the advantage of having six spaces versus four spaces or three spaces. And I think that's, as David's saying, maybe that's fair game for the board to consider and say, we'd like to, you know. I think the reason the parking is on the Palmer Square side or facing it is simply they want the two in-spaces. If you did it the other way, I don't know if you could get those two spaces, especially with a fire escape coming down. But we thought with all that's going in there, the parking, having six spaces in the downtown was probably a good thing. Is it the best design? Maybe for the site, but not in a general way. And I think the board needs to weigh that as well. As far as the trash, it's been an interesting area for years. It's a trash compactor, which I don't think is really used. It was put in there with the hope that, and I don't know if Small World put it in or Burger King, it goes back to 2000, and I forget the details, but we were trying to sort of regionalize garbage and have both, when there was a Burger King on Nassau Street and Small World was expanding, to utilize a trash compactor and then maybe get some of the other businesses to also. It just didn't work. I don't think they could agree on who was using it, how much. But I think we're confident that a better trash plan, because I think there are also a number of garbage cans on certain days back there, which further tightens the parking. But by having a dumpster that maybe isn't quite as angled or is on wheels and easier for the garb, you know, that can be worked out, which is why you'll see in the staff reports, we all said, we need a trash plan. We respect that their request to saying, well, if it's not a restaurant, it's a different plan. And it is. So we were comfortable with that. Obviously, if the board wants, whether it's some modifications to the parking and/or to the trash plan and wants to look at it, what you've done sometimes is send it to the Landscape Subcommittee, which is really landscape and development, where they would do a further look based on the guidance that you give them in terms of working it out. For the first time, we saw the planter. I think that maybe should go to the landscape. I don't know if that's going to work. They're nice planters, but I don't know if you're going to keep those plants alive without a lot of effort. And those kind of things, we may want to send to our Landscape Subcommittee to take a look at. But I think the board really needs to weigh, do you need the six spaces? You've heard a lot, and there's been a lot of discussion. Maybe you want to lose one of those to have some bike parking in the back. And I haven't heard the applicant address what he sees as the need for bike parking. But those are all, I believe, things that are before you tonight to discuss and weigh. There's no way you're going to design the parking in the back so that it's going to operate like a suburban parking lot. There are other instances where it's tight and people do a K-turn and sometimes more than, you know, three turns in order to get out. And it'll be limited to just employees and residents. But we thought the opportunity in the CBD to pick up some more parking made sense.
Yeah. So is it right to follow up with that?
Sorry?
Is it right to follow up to that? Or did you want to talk about something else? I just wanted to make a quick comment. So I completely agree that the planters probably are not the most appropriate for that area. You're probably going to need to water them. They're not going to be really serving the purpose of dealing with, you know, stormwater or anything like that. And I don't know how many people are going to really be back there to look at the beautiful planters. I mean, I think that, I don't know if it's possible to put some sort of in-ground stormwater management, green infrastructure. You mentioned that there's no sun, but I think that actually, there is actually in the top lot behind Lisa Jones, actually a green space right now. And actually, that's one point I wanted to make, I guess, in terms of impervious surface. I guess by doing this modification to the rear and adding parking there, you're taking away that permeable surface, that lawn. Even though it's, you know, a lawn that's enclosed, it's right now serving a purpose of, you know, capturing some stormwater. So I think that to, I guess, make up for the fact that we're going to be essentially building over and paving over it, I think that, you know, it would probably make sense to add some sort of stormwater management in kind of those dead spaces, the triangles. And I think that there are certain plants that could survive with less light. In regards to the parking layout, I mean, I get that, you know, there's a need for parking and, you know, you want to, I guess, get as many spaces. But that last spot towards, I guess, I guess, the exit kind of makes me nervous, the one that kind of abuts the dumpster. Because I just feel like, you know, a car just bump, backing out of that is going to hit the dumpster. I don't know if that can be rearranged. But I think that, you know, the other slide that you had with the parking layout was actually better. But I think that if, I would just make any recommendations, I would suggest potentially taking that one out and turning it into some sort of stormwater management, green infrastructure, so.
I certainly agree with that. And I would point out, I don't, I'm not certain my math is right, but I think these 1,400 additional square feet of impervious coverage will generate about 40,000 gallons of runoff per year going straight into the storm sewer system and contributing to a flooding problem we already have. And people, I understand the health and safety issues that are posed by that closed-off green space. But there's a lot of data about the health impacts of living near green things and being able to look out your window at something green. And so the, there's place for a tree trench, tree pit, replacing at least one of those parking spaces. It can absorb a gigantic amount of water and really be an amenity for the people who are living there and maybe even for people who are dining there. Sorry, I don't mean to sound preachy, but I really think there are opportunities here. And green roofs, you know, could also be a really cool option and absolutely add value when it comes to people who live next to them, especially if there's an opportunity, not just to look out on it, but also to access it for, as leisure space.
I'd also add the option of cisterns, you know, to capture rainwater.
Yes, David?
So I think I would like to jump on the bandwagon in terms of, I think I would feel more comfortable with five parking spaces than six. The caveat being that I think that there may be a relationship between the trash management plan, I mean, the footprint of that dumpster might be able to change depending on the technology that you use. You know, if you get a compactor or a series of small compactors, you know, one for recyclables, one for landfill, they may take up a lot less space and make me more comfortable with the maneuvering for the cars back there. But as of right now, absent that information, I don't feel comfortable with the six spaces. The other comment I would make about the maneuvering back there is I'd like to see bollards, you know, protecting the mechanical equipment. I think that you're really going to need that. Regardless whether it's five or six spaces, there's going to be a lot of risk of hitting the mechanical equipment. And it's a detail. I don't know that the board needs to see them, but I would, I would think that that would be a condition of approval, that the mechanical equipment would be protected in that way. And the last thing that I'd like to suggest, you know, I think that there are probably, as Louise and Zenon talked about, potentials for using the triangles of space for some kind of small stormwater. I think that, you know, my rationale for us being able to require that is the variance that's being requested in terms of not meeting the green space requirement. And so I feel comfortable, even though that's something that might not be strictly required, I think that we can use that as our lever to ask for that. I think that I would also be comfortable, as an alternative, to have some kind of green roof, which would really be an amenity for people in the upper apartments. So if you wanted to sort of do one or the other, look at those possibilities, I think.
Oh, I think both is great, a great idea. And it may be, I'm sorry to interrupt, were you finished, David?
Yeah.
Might be also a terrific opportunity for permeable pavement. There's a lot of ways to keep water on that.
Permeable pavement doesn't, is actually not considered impervious coverage, you know, in the.
Not for lot coverage, but it does, it is encouraged, I think, as a stormwater management practice.
That would, that would work as a, yes, as a stormwater solution.
And let me just ask you, I think what, was it HPC suggested espaliered plants? None of you have mentioned that as a possibility for the.
Read that, could you read that?
Espaliered plants or trellises.
I didn't know what that meant. I have to be, I have to confess, okay?
Trellises.
Sort of up against the building.
I thought it was probably.
Was that mentioned in the memo or?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great, too. If you could put like, you know.
Jack, did I interrupt you?
Just one suggestion on, if you are looking for green in those triangles, you may want to consider granting a variance for the size of the parking stall so that green could get a little bit bigger. 17 or 18 feet.
Well, I was wondering if bike parking could fit in that triangle.
That's certainly another option.
The big one, where the stairs come down?
The corner?
The corner.
Yeah. It's tough, I mean, because of the stairs, which.
Oh, the stairs are above it.
And you want people who are coming down the fire escape to be able to get out once they're at the bottom of the stairs? And if the bikes are.
Well, I would think that maybe if we were to remove that one parking spot on the bottom, I guess, bottom here, maybe that could be some sort of staff parking space for bike.
For sure.
And there may be other locations there that we can also address that. You know, we do have, part of doing this is we'll have access to what is largely, you know, an unused and quite sizable basement area below one of the buildings. And that could be an interesting place to have some bike storage so that we don't take up more area that might be, you know, used for some site enhancements as well. So, you know, we're certainly open to those kinds of things. And I do think that the nature of the application will allow us some of that flexibility to address it.
Let me just ask Mr. Zinder. You had changed a little bit from the environmental problems, which are many. You mentioned that you were going to match the brick of 14 and a half to change the facade?
Yes.
And you're aware that that's... One of the reasons this is a listed building is that it's one of the few buildings built of handmade bricks from the Rocky Hill terracotta factory?
No, actually, we didn't know that. But we did actually manage to match the bricks. They're going to be, I believe, they're Roman-sized bricks, so they're very long and they're thin.
Yeah, they're an odd size.
Right. We've actually matched the size and the color. We have samples if you'd like to see.
But there's all sorts of documentation about the difficulty of casting a terracotta arch for a firehouse.
Right, and the arch. And apparently, the arch had failed. And that's why they pulled it out. And we had, in the earlier designs, we had hoped to reuse the arch or be able to emulate it in some way. But when we opened up the wall, which you can see here, it had been removed for the stabilization of the upper facade and a piece of steel was installed instead. And so with that, you can actually see the steel in our detail.
But it's... Well, it's very nice to see that at least some of this... The original facade of this building is being preserved. And the back part, I assume, was the part that was added around World War I or so. It's not all... It was not this long when it was built.
Correct. It was... The single-story section was added later. And it was just covered in stuff as well.
And the other buildings, I mean, I have certainly been in them a number of times in the past 50 years, and they were not in great condition, particularly the Small World one. I assume that these can be stabilized and brought up to code and some...
They've been improved. They've been working to improve them.
Yeah, quite hard.
I will comment that I think that even if the new brick is not from the Rocky Hill terracotta factory, it's going to be a heck of a lot better than what's there on the ground floor right now because if you look at the pictures of the existing, there's a terrible mismatched brick on the ground floor that doesn't match the upper part of the building at all. And I also think that, you know, the design's quite sensitive in terms of having the... That trim band, which does separate entirely the first floor from the second floor. So if there's a slight difference in the brick, it won't be something that you pick on.
So, is it right? So, I don't know if it's just me, but it's something about the side entrance to the left, the one that kind of goes to the alley, to me seems a little awkward. I don't know if it's just me. But I don't know if there's any way to potentially have, like, the entrance be a different way. I don't know if that's something that we can really change.
The separate door with the rounded top?
Well, yeah, the entrance to the top floors, I don't know. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
They happen everywhere in town.
Okay, so it's common.
There was the first diagram, you know, it's a...
All right. It seems a little awkward to me.
Yeah, I must say, I like the facade a lot. I think it... I think it's very nice, very clean, and yet fits in well. I would still opt for more parking places than some of you seem to feel is necessary. It's not our problem if they don't work. They can cut them back. They're only required to have three. It, you know, it's a balance. Do we... We have a parking situation downtown? Although they tell us we have, we're only using half of the 6,000 or some that are available. I mean, I'm not persuaded by that.
But not in that area, by the way. Not in that area. That area is part... It's almost always 100% worked, yeah.
So, I think that... But this adds to the number of parking places in a part of the town where parking places are extremely rare. I... I'm a big believer in plants, but I can't think of anything worse than a plant that's struggling to survive with very little sunshine. If one can figure out a way of espaliering plants or doing something espaliering, that's fine. But my own sense is that downtown, in this location, you've already got a pear tree that is apparently needs soil that is a street tree. I don't think you can turn these into lush landscapes. I think we need parking, frankly, back there, more than we need green things. I do think we need to figure out how to deal with runoff. We are creating much more of a surface, pervious or impervious. And I'd opt for figuring out some way of managing the water and keeping the six parking places. If they don't work, then the applicant can sort it out with our engineer, right?
Would it be possible to go back to the section through the parking area so you can see what kind of sunlight they might? Because I think the idea of having trellises that are, you know, along the blank wall of that building that's on Palmer Square, you know, you could get some decent sunlight for some kind of climbing plant.
As you know, David, somebody has to care for plants. They have to water them. If it's in espalier, somebody has to train it. And it doesn't happen. It might... It just doesn't happen. It ought to, but...
The ivy on my house grows without me doing anything.
It seems to me desirable, but not practical. If it's practical, tell us. But I... If I have to choose, I would choose parking places.
We've looked at that some. Actually, the area you're talking about, unfortunately, isn't our property.
Right.
So we've got no control over that. But maybe you want to comment on the light issues?
So, basically, the abutting properties are two- and three-story buildings that are right up to the property line. And as the... This is something that we struggled with, is how to plant the area. And there's really no direct sunlight. It's indirect. It's in the shade 90% of the time. What little light it does get is when it's directly overhead. So it's a very difficult area to plant.
So just to be clear, the building that's just to the left of Small World is a five-story building, okay? And the building that's on Palmer Square is also a five-story building? Both of these buildings are to the south of this lot. And so all the southern light has to somehow get past a five-story building and then drop down five stories to get any direct sunlight. This part of the property gets very little direct sunlight.
So if you actually look at an aerial, I mean, it does get sunlight. The lawn actually is green and there's a tree back there, so.
The lawn is green and there is a tree back there, yes. But it gets very little light. It doesn't mean the stuff can't grow in very little light, but it gets very little light.
I mean, yeah. I mean, but it does get light and enough for grass and trees to grow back there, so.
And ENLP, are you with ENLP? You guys have got great GI skills, you know? And, I mean, I'm not a content expert, but with 47 inches of rain and 1,200 or 1,000 or 800 additional square feet plus downspouts and stuff, you could get a ton of rain into a big tree trench. You could direct more water to, you know, create openings for stormwater to get to the existing street trees, true, too, and help to... I mean, there's ways. So, I mean, I trust you to be creative and come up with some cool stuff. But I don't think we should be deterred by or assume that nothing's going to grow back there because things are growing back there. And, um, anyway, we don't need to litigate this whole thing, yeah.
Do you want to make actual concrete recommendations? Because the report recommended that the stormwater... There be a stormwater management plan as part of this.
Yes, which an engineer and in...
And you can...
Along with a landscape architect will create, right?
And you can also send the planting plan to the landscape subcommittee, so.
I would definitely take Jack's recommendation that the parking lot, the stall size should be reduced slightly to increase the amount of area for the plants to grow in those triangles, which would then become pentagons or whatever they would be if they had a couple more feet. Because, you know, part of what's difficult on plants in this kind of situation, it's not just the sunlight, but also, you know, are you going to have salt on the pavement that's going to run into the soil? And are you gonna... The soil... The pavement heats up and creates a drying effect that, you know, can hurt the plants as well. So I think the bigger the planting area that we create, the better the chance that the plants could survive.
So maybe I can make a suggestion. We were just sort of putting our heads together here because certainly it's in our interest as well to have this all be the best plan we can. And we've put an awful lot of energy into doing just that and then looking at those triangles that are behind each of these parking spaces. And knowing that we designed the parking spaces to be, you know, the full 9x19 size, if we shrunk down the size of those parking spaces to more typical compact car size and actually allowed ourselves even some more room there, we could take those triangles and, you know, and plant grass and do some things with it, which might address all of this.
Would you go to 17-foot-long stalls?
Yeah, I don't know the... Exactly the right size, yeah.
I think it's something we want to look at. And, I mean, you got to figure out how it's going to work. But I think if you were going to grant the variance, I would grant it to be able to go down to an 8x17-foot space.
And I would also say that it's not just about planting grass. I would suggest that it's actually designed green infrastructure. So there would be a curb cut and there'd be rocks and other grass or, you know, vegetation dispersed between it so that way it can fill up with water, retain it, and then drain it gradually. And that can be designed, you know, with like a French drain or some sort of overflow.
Like a bio-swell.
Yeah, or like a rain garden.
Rain garden.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Whatever practice works best in that very tight space.
Yeah, it's a very tight space, but, you know, at least you can make up for, you know, the amount of impervious surface you're adding.
If, I mean, if the board decides to grant the variance, we have more space to play with. We can certainly look at. Getting very creative, Dr.
Sorry. You know, I don't know if by compacting the parking spaces you give more space to that last spot. But, yeah, that last spot still makes me nervous. So I don't know if the board wants to make a condition that or to remove that or change that into, you know, something else like bike parking or green infrastructure space.
So, Jack, could you repeat the size that we're going to grant them a variance to go?
I would leave some flexibility, but I think the variance would be an eight-foot-wide by 17-foot-deep space.
Okay.
And the requirement is 9x19?
The ordinance requires 9x19.
And if they're eight instead of nine, that's also going to help the circulation situation at the entry?
Well, if we feel like that's going to solve the problem, then that's fine.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Moller?
Just a question from Mr. Siegel. My office got a call from the attorneys for Palmer Square who told us that they weren't objecting to the application, but there was an issue in terms of the easement. And we understand that that's been... You've had dialogue with Palmer Square and that's been worked out?
There's no issue, yeah. There's no issue. Palmer Square agrees with us and we agree with them that we have no issue and we're all happy neighbors.
Okay, and there's no additional instruments that are being prepared?
I'm sorry, Siegel.
There's no additional instruments, easements or anything? That what's in place now is sufficient in both you and Palmer Square?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other issues that you want to bring up?
Open that up.
I can't. Right. At some point, we need... We have the public chair. Okay, okay. All right, let's... Why don't we take a look at the memo? We've discussed some of the variances.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Are we... Are we going to approve or not the... This entire application tonight before we see a stormwater management plan? Is that what we're sort of steering toward or...
What we do, the stormwater management plan is submitted to the engineering department usually.
But it's the board's responsibility to review and approve that as part of an application, right?
Yes. But what we thought that the... If it's going to the landscape subcommittee, that they would present it at that point and the landscape subcommittee would approve it along with whatever change in parking, whatever landscaping, and whatever they're doing with the trash and recycling.
All right. What I'd like to do is just kind of walk through the reports because there are a number of recommendations that are made and just get the reaction of the applicant and the board to each of those. So I'm going to try and go through them pretty quickly. Just starting with Lee's report. Paragraph 4.3, protective bollards should be installed. Okay. Is that acceptable to you? And that'll be part of what you present to the landscape subcommittee?
For protective bollards, right?
Do you mean for the mechanical equipment?
Well, 4.3 talks about the air conditioners. Basically...
In the parking area.
4.3 is in reference to the air conditioners and protective bollards for the air conditioners?
Yeah, and we have no objection to that.
Okay. And the trash compactor?
Do we need one for the trash compactor as well? Probably.
Lee and Jack, do we need one for the trash compactor as well, or?
Yeah, they have to come back with a plan and present it to the landscape subcommittee.
For all of these...
Well, wait, no, he's not talking about the trash plan. He's still talking about the protective bollards.
Right, yeah, right.
So you can't put...
Well, I think that you want...
The truck needs to get it.
...by the mechanical equipment behind the building.
Okay. And then just moving on to 4.5, we've talked about this. Trash recycling delivery plan subject to review and approval of the land use engineer. That you've already talked about that? That's acceptable?
Yes.
Right, okay. Then the second part of 4.5, we talked about this also, is that trash, compostables, and recycling material not be left on the street overnight? That's acceptable? Okay, then 5.1, that's a stormwater management plan. We've talked about that. And that's going to go to the landscape subcommittee, Wanda?
Yes.
And then 7.1, which is a list of items A through W that the Princeton Environmental Commission has proposed. What I'd like to do is just go through them all. I know it'll take a couple of minutes, but just to see what we want to include as a condition and what we don't want to include as a condition. For covered bike storage, you're going to come in as part of the plans with something in terms of bike parking in the back, maybe in the basement, you suggested. Correct?
Yes, well, we'll be looking at that.
That's all right. And then B, an EV charger? I just want to...
I personally would love that since I have an electric car. However, you know, I'm not sure what that would even entail and for the size of the lot, whether it would, you know, eat up more space that we might use for some of the other things we've talked about.
I would recommend we not include that. Is the board amenable to that?
Anyone?
Fine with me.
That's fine.
Okay. Then adequate soil for the pear tree? It says trees, there's more than one?
This is the one out front?
Is it just one? Is it just one tree?
Just one.
This is plural?
Yeah.
Just one? Yeah. Okay, C is acceptable? Then, oh, new trees, but we're, I mean, we're not going to go there with the new trees. Obviously going to do a landscape plan, figure it out with the landscape, with, among yourselves and with the landscape subcommittee. So D, D and E, I would not include those. I think we want to just defer that to further work by the applicant on that and by the landscape subcommittee. And then F, permeable or pervious paver should be used in the parking lot. Is that acceptable?
I think we're going to want to look at that with the applicant because that may be one of the things they have to do to, to meet the stormwater management over and above any kind of landscaping.
So that's part of the stormwater plan?
Right, to be considered as, considered as part of stormwater management plan?
Yes.
Okay. The kitchen, G, the kitchen should provide for organic, organic waste disposal? I mean, obviously it's not really a site plan issue, but.
Yeah, I, I think one of the tenants at the property, Small World Coffee, already, already is doing that, if I understand correctly.
Okay. Is this a reference to, to the apartments as well or just to the, the restaurant use or uses?
Well, it's hard to say.
Sorry, what was the question?
For G, is that a, a reference just to the restaurant use or uses or is it a reference to the apartments as well?
I think it was in reference to the restaurant, but.
Okay.
It'd be great for the apartments to.
So what, just tell me what your action, reaction is with respect to the restaurants and.
Does the restaurant currently use organic disposal, composting?
I believe they do, but.
I think they do.
It's not a representation I can make.
They do.
I don't know for sure and I certainly don't know how they do it.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I can imagine they already do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we won't put this in or does anybody want to put in? G, no, okay. Okay. H is really part of that, that recycling and waste plan that's going to be submitted. So I don't think we need that separately. Then I, takeout containers should be recycled or compostable. I mean, this is.
This is getting dandered very finely.
I think it might be hard since the, well, the owner of the business isn't here, I guess, to make that decision.
Right, right.
Can I ask, can I ask a question about these? Which of these does the planning board have some authority for? I mean, I didn't think we did require, could make requirements of inside stuff.
Right.
Can we?
Not typically.
No.
We have to follow the building code.
I mean, they're more in the nature of recommendations that we are encouraging.
And that was by understanding how many of these began, were just recommendations or education for the applicant to understand.
But we can't.
That there are other options than the current practices. Because the secondary concern is, I don't know how we enforce it. I mean, that one's a good one, takeout contain, I, I don't know who would enforce that.
And, and for us, I would just say, you know, because we don't know, we know what a few of the existing uses are, but as we start to lease up, we, we don't know what those businesses will be. And that's, as a landlord, it's very difficult to enforce that on a tenant and, you know, perhaps as part of that tenant's application, you know, when they come. We can, we would, we would, these are the kinds of things we would certainly encourage as well, but it's hard for us to.
But I guess you guys will be doing the appliances. I mean, do you guys have any plans? I don't think we really spoke about the interior architecture of the building, really.
Right, so, so when typical, and it's typical of most building owners in town, if you have a, you know, a retailer, commercial tenant that comes in, you leave the, the interior fit out to them and they will be selecting their own light fixtures and appliances. The ones that we'll be dealing with on the exterior and, and with the, the building materials that we use, we always try and focus on using green building materials and, and green practices to be as sustainable as, as possible. It's sort of a, you know, it's an ongoing theme in, in the way that we do all of our properties.
Well, maybe the way, where we should handle a condition is simply from, from this point on, just the applicant should consider them and, and use these elements to the extent you deem it appropriate.
And.
Okay?
And ask their tenants to observe best practices.
Right, and ask the tenants to.
I, I do just want to point out that item T, fifty percent of demolition waste should be recycled. I believe that is now actually required under the municipal ordinance, so that's not a suggestion.
Okay, so that should be a requirement. Which item is that, oh, oh, T.
T.
Okay.
But also mentioned, or actually posed the question, from what I understand, based off of the amount of impervious surface that they are adding, that also should trigger stormwater management ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's, they've, they've agreed to do that.
Okay, yeah, so, okay. So all this conversation wasn't in vain.
Okay.
No.
There's retention, right?
So.
Okay. Then just moving on to nine point one, number, A, one, three lots to be consolidated into one deed. I mean, you were proposing to consolidate the lots, so that, that doesn't have to be a condition. No loading space be required and, and none has been proposed. We talked about landscaping. I don't think we need a separate condition on that. Four says the air conditioning units should be screened. Is that, what's the reaction of staff on that? Is that practicable or?
There's not enough space to screen them adequately. You're talking about bollards, a tight spot and it's really aside from where the cars are and when you look down that from Palmer Square, you see the back of the building and you're not going to see as much of the mechanical units. You'll see the dumpster, but you can't really screen it if you want to empty it, so, I mean.
Okay. Okay, and then, now, HPC recommends that the proposed landscaping be returned to HPC for administrative review, but we're going to help, we're going to send, send it to the landscape subcommittee. Okay.
And the chairman of HPC sits with the landscape subcommittee.
That's fine. And just move on, moving on to the, the memo, my, the memo from Jack and Derek. Okay. E, surface, stormwater management plan, we've already talked about that. Bike racks, we've talked about that. The air, the air, the air conditioners and the bollards, we've talked about that. This is now on, under I. And we've talked about the conflict between the, the fire escape and the two spaces. Okay. And then I would just add, although this is an ordinance requirement, under L, the hours of construction, but we're going to move it up to eight AM from seven AM. Everybody agree to that?
Where are you?
I'm, I'm under, I'm under L, which is a review in the, it's, and it's on page five, the very end of page five.
Okay.
Okay?
Noise?
Yep, noise. The one recommendation, because it's in a residential area as well as a commercial area, that rather than being allowed to start at seven AM, it should be eight AM.
That's fine.
Okay?
Okay.
And then just, let's see.
Okay, the, the sign.
Yeah, that's right.
Will come back when it's chosen.
Okay, the sign will go to the historic preservation commission, okay? And then under five, general recommendations, the applicant shall replace any uneven or damaged sidewalk sections in the front sidewalk.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
This is number five on page six of, of the West Bridger memo. Item B, the applicant shall replace any uneven or damaged sidewalk sections.
Yes.
Okay? And C, is that comprehensive trash and recycling plan that we've already talked about? And let me just see if, on my notes.
Let me just ask, the staging for this building is all going to be from the back, from that parking area, with construction vehicles and so on?
Yeah, we don't expect to have construction vehicles in the back. There may be deliveries just for a moment.
No, during construction, during, when you're working on the buildings.
How we're going to phase it and stage it? Uh, yeah, we're working on that, but we expect the, the first part of it will be the, the required interior demolition within that rear space and then really working from the inside out on taking down that back section and, and, you know, being very mindful of, of the staging issues.
Because it is a residential area.
That's correct. And we have those tenants right above. So yes, we're, we're quite mindful of that and there'll be, you know, there'll be a lot of thought that goes into minimally impacting that whole process. It will be a relatively quick process, the demolition. But yes, we're, we're on board with that.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just, the remaining conditions with respect to lots consolidation, I think the deed should be submitted for just review and approval by myself and, and the land use engineer. Then, condition.
Do we have a copy of the easement as well?
No, we do not have a copy of the easement.
To be submitted to the engineering.
Okay. Then the, the access easement to be submitted to, to that land use engineer.
I'm sorry, it's extremely hard to hear you.
A copy of the access easement to be submitted to the land use engineer? It's no, no problem.
Okay. Then, is this, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the parking will be limited to employees and residents. Work with the municipal engineer with respect to installing a bike rack in the front? Okay? Now, we talked about the, the landscape plan.
And will the landscape subcommittee see the, the lighting when the final placement is?
The, the lighting is actually shown on the drawings currently and.
And that's the final placement, right?
That's the placement.
And then, that's it with the conditions. So we have the minus site plan approval before the board, preservation plan approval, and then five variances now. The four variances, which are set forth on pages two and three of the memo by Derek and Jack, and the fifth variance, which would be for parking stalls that are eight by seventeen rather than nine by nineteen.
Mr. Muller?
Yes?
In terms of the covered bike parking, I know there was discussion about possibly of putting it in the basement. Is that something, I, I'm not sure where you were at with the conditions that you read through about the covered bike parking.
Yeah, it, it was that they were going to submit as part of the submission to the landscape subcommittee, bike, some initiative for parking of bikes in the back, either covered or in the basement.
Okay.
Was that a yes? I'm sorry, I, I couldn't understand either. I thought that the applicant had agreed to provide that covered parking. That was like the very first thing on the EC's list? And what, did I misunderstand that? I mean, probably in the basement, but you talked about the basement.
Right, we, my, my point was is that, that the basement might be, you know, a logical place to do it, but I, you know, I think we'd like to have the opportunity to look at it so we can really submit the best plan.
But it'll be somewhere?
Yeah, so the, the answers, the answers, yeah. The answer's a yes.
Great. But he, I think he's, they're going to contribute to parking on the sidewalk as well and the front.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, I do want to do the public. Okay, right. Let me open the meeting to, to public participation. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this application? If you would, could you come up to the podium, use the microphone there? Anyone? No one? My goodness. Must have really worked things out with everyone. All right, if no one wants to speak, then we'll close the public portion. And I think, did you have further comment, Jenny?
No, I was going to make a motion to approve the application with the conditions, as our lawyer just outlined.
Do you want to go ahead and do that and, and the variances?
And approve the variances.
All right, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it, Gail.
I was going to let Fern do this since it's her last meeting. Fern. It's been seconded, moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, could you call the roll please on that?
Yes.
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 Ms. Bowman, yes? Ms. Wilson?
I'm going to abstain. There's so much to like about this and I, and I do appreciate what's happening, but I just can't vote yes without having seen the stormwater plan, so I abstain.
Yes.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to say that I thought this was an unusually, for me, useful presentation and well planned out. The photographs were great, helped me to visualize what is a pretty complicated system. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would also like to say, despite the fact that I didn't really like the side entrance, I really liked the rest of it, so.
And if I could have, have a.
And I would, I would like to invite Louise to come to the site plan subcommittee meeting when we review the stormwater.
I thought the stormwater, the, well, we'll talk.
And if I could have a copy of the, hard copy of the, the slides, and that's, that's all the slides?
This is all the slides and I could, I have a USB with it as well.
Good, great, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, that's it, that's.
Okay, thank you very much. And board members, we have another application to do. If you want to stand up for a minute, scratch and so on. There were three of them. One on Chestnut Street, not the one that's there now.
A previous one?
But it's, it's really, it was a sensational building because it was done by Rocky Hill Terracotta, who did, you know, the cladding for the Chrysler Building in New York.
Really?
Oh, yes. At the same time they were working on this.
It's so interesting to know what, that, that, what the original plating was and where it came from and what it looked like and.
Lisa Jones was the first public library.
Which one?
The one to the right, yeah.
I feel like there ought to be these layers. Here's the nineteen ten layer, here's the nineteen thirty layer.
I don't know, I mean, Small World was a bar. It was a bar in the nineteenth century. It was, it was Mike O'Brien's bar and hotel.
Mike O'Brien's bar.
And hotel. What was that? You want to do what? Okay, well, it's, it's, okay. Guys, it's, it's getting late, maybe we should come back. Yeah, guys, it's, it's getting late, maybe we should come back into session. No, something else. The bike parking? See if you can get Zinn and David. Okay, if we could come back into session, the next application is HP Witherspoon Properties, LLC. This is a minor site plan with variances. It's 277, 281 Witherspoon Street, block 7101, lot 15. And, Mr. Solo, if we could get you to go over this.
Um, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So that's one to affirm. Please state your full name for the record.
Lee Solo, town planner. Thank you, good evening again. As Chair indicated, this is a minor site plan with variance application for 277 and 281 Witherspoon Street. I'm gonna be using a, a couple of boards. The first one, we'll label PB1, it's sheet one in your packet. Um, and it's been colored and labeled. Um, let me give you a little background, the property is located at the southeast corner of Witherspoon Street and Henry Avenue. There are two buildings located on this lot 15, and the property is about 0.9 acres in size. 277 is a building under construction, it's a two-story building, it will contain 14,972 square feet. Uh, it's proposed to house a 94-seat restaurant with offices and retail on part of the first floor and office and/or retail on the second floor. Um, and as you're looking at the drawing, the second building is 277, um, the building to the north, the second one is a three-story building and is designated 281, Um, Witherspoon. It contains 31,719 square feet, and it has offices on all three floors. Um, the two buildings are connected, there's a second floor connection that's located right here about in the middle of the two buildings. Um, as you're aware, these buildings were all part of the medical center when the hospital was in town. The building to the south was demolished and a new building built on the same footprint as the old building. Vehicle access to the site, as you may recall when we heard Avalon Bay, we sort of crafted a zone that became a mixed-use zone for the hospital properties. And I've labeled the approximate location where the parking garages of about 700 spaces. There are 186 parking spaces in that garage that are allocated to these two buildings. That garage is accessed via driveway on Henry Avenue and via a new entry that serves Avalon Bay as well called Albert Way and going into the, um, garage. The applicant is seeking variances for approval of nine new business signs, one existing sign, as well as the installation of electrical transformer in the front yard. Setback, I'm gonna just talk briefly about that. That transformer has already been installed, it's, I've highlighted in yellow here, and there is a setback variance that is associated with that. Um, the property is in the retail and office zone. Um, the district does not provide any standards for sign, the zoning officer has determined that all the signs therefore require a variance. The application has been reviewed by SPRAB, and they suggested that the applicant modify the sign package, which they've done. So there'll be a little bit of confusion and I'll try to explain the different signs. I know another exhibit was passed out that the applicant will use later. But the engineer's report refers to signs and sign numbers, um, that were in the old one. They've changed the sign numbers, um, and some of the signs based on their SPRAB meeting, um, and that's what's before you today. So I'm gonna take a few minutes just to walk you through, and I'm gonna use two boards and hopefully you, you can clearly see them. First, I want to talk about 277 Witherspoon, which again is, is a southerly building. The sign order, the numbers are, aren't gonna go one, two, three, four, um, but let's start with sign number seven. There are three sign number sevens, they are all located facing Albert Way. Um, they are all seven feet, four inches by eight inch. It's, they're a canopy-type sign, uh, in this, in that these are metal canopies that come out over the doors, and when you look at in your exhibit, um, where the doors are, and this would be PB2, which is sheet three, in, in yours, you'll see that there are these canopies, uh, solid metal canopies that come out, and there will be a sign, and as you, if you look a little closer, um, for sign sevens, it's a little hard to see, but on your exhibit again, page three, you'll see what it says is two sevens, um, and that's what sign number seven is going to be, and there are three of them over each of the entry doors. Sign number six, and there are four of those, and you can see them labeled here, they are, um, facade-mounted signs, they're, um, mostly fronting Albert Way with one of them fronting on Witherspoon Street. And again, those signs are the same size as sign number seven, they're seven feet, four inches by eight inches. So they're a band, um, of signs. And again, those will also be, um, if you look on the exhibit here, sign six, you have to look real close, but it says two sevens, and that's the signage, the proposed restaurant is, my understanding, is gonna be known as two sevens. Uh, so that's what it is. If the restaurant were not there, you probably would be seeing some other name on those signs. Sign number one, which is in this location, Witherspoon and Albert, is proposed to be a 40-inch by 21-inch wall sign. If you've been out to the site, there is a retaining wall, um, that runs along Albert Way, so towards the beginning of that is where that sign will be located, um, as well. That sign, um, has the address of the building, um, it will indicate that there is parking or the direction for parking, and then lists some of the stores. And now, I guess this is PB3, it's sheet two in your packet. Um, and you can see sign number one, all the way over at the left, building address, direction for parking, and then retails, one and two would be for the retail uses, um, that are proposed. The last sign on 277 is sign number four, it's actually not on the building, it's located towards the back as a directional sign for people coming out of the garage. Um, that's a freestanding sign at the northeast corner of 277 to direct customers from the garage to the retail offices, and you can see that sign here again. So when you come out of the garage, you'll see, it'll tell you the direction to go to the 277, the two sevens, and, and then if there are retail tenants. And again, that's located here, so when you come out of the garage, you'll know to go Okay, for the 281, the northerly building, um, the first sign I wanted to talk about is sign five, which is located here. That's a, um, two-sided sign, it's an existing freestanding sign, it's 78 inches by 48 inches. It's located in an existing planter, um, along Witherspoon Street. Um, sign five is down here, street address, um, and then the name of the various retail enterprises that are located there. Sign two is also a two-sided sign located at the corner of Witherspoon and Henry. You can see on sheet, where am I, on sheet two? Um, it includes, again, um, information as to where to go for parking, the address of the building, um, and then the name of some of the tenants, and again, that's at the corner of Witherspoon and Henry, so that when you're here, you know to come down Henry to get to the parking lot. Sign three, um, is also a freestanding sign, and that's located at the corner of Henry and the access drive into the garage. Sign three, again, you can see it on sheet number two, uh, is a freestanding sign, it's also 40 inches by 21 inches, uh, and it has, again, the address, direction for parking, and then the store names as well. The last sign is an existing facade sign, sign number 10, it is on 281 Witherspoon, um, and indicates the applicant's address, and sign number 10, I don't, I don't think we have an exhibit of that, it, it is already there and on the building. That's a summary of what's before you, it's changed from the zoning and engineer report. Jack and Derek have reviewed the new signage package as well, I don't think any of the variances increased or decreased, so they remain the same. Um, but they did make some changes from what was originally proposed. In my report, um, I had a couple of comments which I'd like to share with you. Staff believes that the buildings do require some signage, um, to identify the uses and maybe more importantly to direct visitors, um, to the parking garage. It's important, this is a residential neighborhood, and we really don't want people driving all over the place looking for parking, we want them to know that they can get to the garage. However, we do have a concern over the size and the number of the signs that get there, and we would suggest to the board, may want to think whether we need all the signs to have, all the retail tenants, or whether the, the signage that's here on the facade is adequate. Sign number three, not certain if we need that, I think when you're on Henry, you see the garage, you know it's there. Uh, sign number two, you probably need, but again, in looking at, and we're suggesting to board may want to consider slightly smaller, I know at the SPRAB meeting they thought slightly bigger, and you'll hear that from the applicant as well, but at staff level, we felt it's important to have the parking s- sign to direct people, but not as important to have all the, the tenant signs. I'm sure the applicant may want to discuss that with you and, and talk about it, cause again, it's a residential area, um, primarily, although there are, it is mixed-use in a number of ways. That also led us to a comment about the, the signs and they're being lighted, all the signs will be lighted, we think that's probably appropriate, um, we'd like them to be on timers, although again, as you get into the more residential area primarily along Henry, um, although across the street here, there are some residences, um, w- we would like to see some consideration given to maybe limiting some of the lighting, or at least putting them on timers so that they go off at a reasonable hour. Um, so I believe sta- signs number one, two, and three, um, the directional ones could be reduced in size. As I indicated, the transformer, it's already there, it's not in a, in a bad location, but it does require board action for the variance. Um, as I indicated, SPRAB did review this, um, an earlier sign package version, um, and the applicant is in general agreement with the SPRAB recommendations, um, and I think during their presentation they'll go over it and explain some of those. Um, Jack, Derek, did I leave out anything you wanted to comment on? Are there questions for me, or I'll turn it over to the applicant?
Yes, Mildred? Um, is it anticipated that the garage will accommodate all of this building? That is Avalon, the restaurant, the office, all of-
Yes, that's how we originally set up when we crafted the zoning. It was complicated because part of it was in the borough and part of it was in the township, but we set it all up so that there would be, there is any, I think it's an easement, uh, for the 186 spaces, so they have a right to that. Concern is, will people actually use the garage? They're gonna have to pay for the garage, I assume, I don't know, we can hear from the applicant whether they've worked out something to reimburse customers or, or validate, but, um, the hope is they go into the garage.
Yeah, I remember that, that, I'm sorry, I, that it was to accommodate the, um, Avalon Bay, and I also remembered that it would accommodate a garage, I mean, um, a restaurant, because we wanted something there, and you know, I, oh gosh, how I remember. But I did not remember the other retail or whatever that you were discussing, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, actually, uh, for the act, the portion in the borough, we did allow some retail and Avalon Bay chose not to do that. The two buildings, and they're in the former township, the, it's a retail office zone, and we did anticipate either office or retail with the idea that the retail would bring people into the development. We weren't at the time thinking that it would be separate ownership, uh, but that it did contemplate the retail.
Anyone else? Questions?
Not, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Goldman of Drinker Biddle &amp; Wreath for the applicant. I hope you're all familiar with the site, I know you've, this site has been an area of interest for quite a number of years. I drove by today and I, I think the new building is pretty much up and nearly finished, and I, I thought it looked really good. As Lee said, this is, essentially is, is an application for some signage, and it's a bit of a unique situation. Your ordinance has a chart that shows what the bulk standards are in each zone, and I have to think it was just an oversight, but there is no set of standards for the RO zone, it was omitted from the chart. And so that gives rise to the notion that, well, it's a retail zone, I think everyone would have anticipated signage for retail, it just was omitted from the chart, but technically therefore each sign creates a variance. The other thing that's a little bit unique, I think, about this particular application is its location. You know, we're not on Nassau Street in the middle of a retail neighborhood where folks are out and shopping and they know where they're going. We're on Witherspoon Street, pretty much adjacent to quiet residential neighborhoods. Witherspoon's pretty dark in that area at night, and we've got a new retail use, the restaurant up at the front, and two places for additional retail towards the garage. And as you all know, if you're gonna have retail establishments, people have to know they're there, and that led to the development of the sign package. What I've done, and I handed out as we were beginning, is taken one of the plans that's in your package, and I literally, just for convenience, with a marker, put big numbers for the sign numbers, cause I found every time I looked at it, I, I just couldn't, the numbers are on there, but I would never see it. So I put the numbers on, so as we talk about the numbers, it'll be easy to track.
And let's, let's mark that as exhibit A1.
A1. And then, A2, I also gave you a chart, and this is a chart with the current numbering of the signs, and it tells you where they are, the size, and if you'll notice, in the very, very left-hand margin, I put the number that it used to be. In other words, when we first filed, and that's what Lee was talking about, the numbers have changed, and I'm gonna explain why. So we had a numbering system when we first filed the application. When we went to SPRAB, among other things, one of SPRAB's requests was that we renumber the signs in a way that each unique sign or sign type had a new separate number in a sequence. And so we said, okay, we would do that, and, and we actually did that. So we've renumbered the signs in the way that SPRAB thought ultimately would be easier to follow, and I think when we look at this chart, you'll see that it actually is okay. But it got a little complicated because some of the original reports had different sign numbers, even though the signs themselves didn't change. The other couple of items that SPRAB recommended, actually, they recommended making the signs even larger than they are, we chose to keep them at a more modest size in terms of the directional sign. We chose to keep them at a more modest size in terms of the directional signs. And SPRAB asked us to add the additional directional sign that's numbered on that chart as number four. And that's the one Lee described, that when you come out of the parking garage, it shows you a direction to where to go for the retail, because you're coming out of a place that's not very obvious where the retail is. So we've added that according to SPRAB. The other thing SPRAB asked was that on those directional signs, and that is sign number one, sign number two, and sign number three, we completely redesigned those signs per the request of SPRAB to indicate where the parking is, and they asked us to add the names of the retail stores. So folks on Witherspoon Street, when they're looking for those stores, which remember, are set back, the restaurant's up on the front, but the other two are set back, they could get an idea of where those stores are early. So we thought that was a good idea. We've added them to the signs. The other thing that you should know before we begin, the directional signs, and again, these are these three, number one, number two, number three, those replace existing directional signs of very similar style that were there by the hospital when they owned the property, except ours are smaller. So we've reduced the size of what the hospital directional signs were in those three important locations. The other one that existed before, which is number five, that's the sign that Lee described as being in an existing planter. The hospital had a huge directory sign there. And as you'll hear, the one we're replacing it with is about half the size. It's smaller. So in terms of the sort of ground-mounted directional signs, we're basically replacing ones that existed with smaller signs. The new signs are essentially the facade signs that have the name of the restaurant, which are on the facade, and the canopy signs, which identify the three planned entrances, one for the restaurant, and then two for the rear retail areas. And again, as you'll hear, and I think everyone agrees, these facade signs are really quite modest in size. They're not tall, they're just long enough to kind of say the name. Now, don't be confused by the name of the restaurant. It's called Two Sevens, which Jim Nunn thought was a catchy name, which is the same as the address, 277. But it's not intended to be the street address. So if someday the 277 restaurant leaves and it becomes, you know, the ABC restaurant, the name will be ABC. Those signs are names of the restaurant that's there. The signs will have some lighting. It's very modest lighting. In fact, we've been able to identify, as you'll hear, even smaller bulbs, 10-watt bulbs that are going to be in a fixture that's cowled and pointed right at the sign. There'll be really no spillover, very, very modest sign, just lighting, just so it's, you know, you can see it at night. I think this is particularly important at this location, because restaurant, people go to in the evening, and it's dark in that location. So the directional signs and the facade signs, it's all really important to ensure that people that are going to this location can find it, know where these two driveways are, can get in without missing and ending up driving through neighborhoods, and, you know, well, that would be kind of bad for the neighborhood, right, to have people kind of lost and driving through. The other thing that's a little unique about this site is really a very much mixed-use site on a very compact space, right? So you have Avalon, you have the office building component, now you have a mixed office building with retail and restaurant. The three-story office building, which is the 281 building, also has some professional services facilities in it as well, a yoga studio, things of that sort. So lots of different uses, sharing two driveways, and sharing a parking garage, right? And so we really don't want people to end up being confused as to where to go. And we think in the end, as you'll see, we think this is a really very modest plan for signage, reduces the free-standing signs that existed before, adds some modest facade and canopy signs for the retail, and will help to, I think, generate a presence, a sense of place and presence in a now uniquely new retail little area, and, you know, and we want this to succeed. I think everyone wants this to succeed. So, one little note on the transformer. We don't install the transformer. You know, PSENG comes and they put the transformer in. And I've, we faced this before on other projects. I remember this from when we did Merwick. PSENG requires that the transformer be within 10 feet of the sidewalk, of the road, because they don't want their folks, when they come to check the transformer, to have to walk into the property. You don't have a choice. If you want electricity, that's where it has to go. Unfortunately, the setback requirement is 25 feet, so that's the technical variance in this. And I think, as Lee said, the location is appropriate, it's just a technical variance for the transformer. So with that, I think what I'll do is ask Peter Dawson, who's been involved in designing the sign package, to maybe walk us through the directional signs initially.
Rich, before we start, I just have a couple of questions for clarification.
Sure.
Now, according to your chart, there were six existing signs. What you named four, and maybe I missed the other two, what are the other two?
Okay, number 10 on this map is actually the numbers 281 that are on the building. They've been on the building. I think in the reports, it was noted that no one could find any prior approval for those numbers. We sort of assumed the hospital had an approval to put it on, but those are pre-existing, and we've included that in our request for a variance, even though we're not changing it. It's just on the building, and it says the number. I don't think, is there another, besides the three-directional and that facade-mounted sign? Well, there's the three-directional signs, there was the old, what's now number five, the directory sign, that's four, and then the 281 sign.
So there's five existing?
Five. That's removed. Yeah, so there was an existing sign on the ground in front of 281 that's being removed and not replaced. So that one, we're not replacing at all.
Okay. Just a couple of other quick questions. Are we talking about 12 or 13 signs? Because I thought Lee had identified 13, and just counting up your numbers, it's actually 13 rather than 12.
Yes, I noticed for 13, and yeah, it's been very hard to count. But what there are is there are three two-sided signs, that's one, two, and three. There are nine one-sided signs that are new, and there's one existing sign. And I think that's where the 12 versus 13 came in. We're only providing 12 new signs, but there's 13 variances, because the existing sign is also the subject of a variance.
Okay. And for, on your chart, for two and three, it's A and B. Does that mean it's two-sided?
I'm sorry.
On your chart, on your chart, for signs two and three, it says A and B. What's A and B stand for?
Two-sided.
Two-sided.
And the A and, there's, the A and B, there are three two-sided signs, and that, those are shown by the A and B in the chart.
Okay.
If you also look on the second-to-last column, it says whether it's one-sided or two-sided.
Yep, thank you.
I was trying to make sense out of, you know, it's a pretty confusing situation. All right. And I think, as I mentioned, we actually have incorporated and adopted all of SPRAB's recommendations. And that's, that led to the current design you're seeing, the current numbering, the current size, except for one. We didn't make them as big as SPRAB had asked us. They asked us to go to 31 inches wide. We felt that 24 was sufficient for what we needed to put on the side. You know, people are driving on Witherspoon, although it's a local road, people perhaps drive a little bit faster than they should, it's dark, and what you don't want is people be straining to see, you know, what the words are on a sign. You want it to be obvious. And that led to sort of this compromise of size that we thought was reasonable. But you want to have all three folks...
Yeah, why don't we do that? If you could raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So I just want to confirm. Could you please each state your full name and spell your last name?
Jim Nunn, last name is spelled N-A-W-N. I'm the restaurant owner.
James Herring, H-E-R-R-I-N-G.
And I'm Peter Dawson, last name is D-A-W-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Peter, what's the name, what's your business?
My business is Lee Signs. We're located in Princeton Junction, and we've been manufacturing signs and graphics for the last 70 years.
You don't look that old.
Not quite, so. My job tonight is to discuss sign number one, two, three, four, and five. And we design these signs such that they are the same size or smaller than the prior existing signs. Most of the directional signs are located in the same locations as the previous signs that the hospital had, the Henry and Witherspoon one, the Witherspoon and parking corner, and the Albert and Witherspoon. Understand that the Albert and Witherspoon sign is replacing one that was further up Witherspoon Street. We kept them the same size so that they could be viewed with minimal straining, and a decision by a person viewing can be easily made to achieve getting them off the road and to their destination quickly. And I'm, excuse me for one second, I'm just going to jump up and show you. This is the size of the directional sign.
Yeah, you have to, you have to use the microphone at all times. This is a recorded...
This is the size of the directional sign.
Wait, before you go on, we probably should mark that as A3, which is a size board for the sign.
This is a mixed-use development with a lot of things going on. People are coming to this site for a variety of reasons, residential, retail, office, yoga, gym, and parking. From my experience, when you have mixed use like this, it's very important to make wayfinding clear. The easier it is to get those individuals to their destination, and the quicker you get them off the main streets, reduces the amount of circling this particular site. These signs we've designed are very similar in design to signs that we've built for Princeton University at the Forest Al Capix. They are in fact designed for 25 mile-an-hour traffic. They're not what we would call green post signs with, you know, the snow fence signs with something attached to them. These are aluminum boxed signs. The directional signs are three and a quarter inches thick, and they're painted with a two-part epoxy paint, which gives them maximum longevity. Each sign will have lighting, as Rich said, and we're going to be using a 10-watt bulb with a cowling that goes around it to direct the light specifically to the sign, and that yields 750 looms. The sign's purpose is to get the people to their destination. Many of the people who come to this site may be first-time visitors, inasmuch as it consists of doctors' offices, retail restaurants, in addition to the actual office space. They need more guidance than to simply see a name on a monument sign. We want to direct them to the parking area, and this is a clean, simple, and fast way to accomplish wayfinding. We have analyzed this site and this project and believe this to be the best solution for wayfinding. Two more things I want to add. The directional signs prior were 7.75 square feet. The new size will be 5.83 square feet, so there is a reduction in size, which reflects A3. And the monument sign was 46 square feet, and it is now going down to 26 square feet.
Jim is going to talk about the facade signs, the restaurant signs, and maybe we should do that, and then we can have questions for everybody.
Okay.
Good evening. So Two Sevens is one of what will be three tenants in this building, 277. And you'll know me by AgriKola and Cargo and the Dinky Bar and Kitchen, where the signage that we've put in place, I would say, is modest. I'm not a big believer in the signs being as large as possible, because I think that the signage plays together with outdoor tables, windows looking into the restaurant, and various other things that are cues to creating a welcoming, informative approach. So when we took a look at this site, there were two challenges, in my opinion. The first was the fact that this would be the first restaurant I have where cars are driving by, for the most part, versus pedestrians. And so there needed to be an angle of the signage to be seen. So we adopted a fairly modest-sized, eight-inch-high letter, roughly seven to eight-foot wide length, and put it on the south and west corner in a facade sign on the orangish awning fabric. That was for cars passing, coming from the north or going to the south at 25 miles an hour, and capturing people's attention. The canopy sign, this, the facade, the south facade of this building is sort of more or less on one plane, and in order to identify the main entrance, because in our case, we'll have three doors that lead into the restaurant, in order to identify the main entrance, we chose to put this three-foot-six by 13-foot metal panel to form a canopy over the door. And because there will be two others of these for the other two tenants, we also have placed a, an eight-inch by roughly seven to eight-foot-wide sign, the letters Two Sevens sort of hanging off the underside of this metal canopy. And the letters are metal-faced with a translucent plastic edge, where there will be a little bit of glow from a internally illuminated arrangement. So it's a soft way of highlighting the letters that are hanging off of the canopy. So, and Jamie has chosen to use that design both for the facade sign and also the canopy sign for the other two tenants, to create some consistency. So if you were to walk, if you were to walk down the south side of the building to access these, you go under one of the canopies, you might be a little confused with the way the glass in the storefronts are, because things could look the same, but each of us will have a identifying sign, which is fairly modest, that's on that canopy on the south side, south facade.
All right, so... Well, you can keep it, because I'm going to ask you questions. So again, particularly distinguishing the restaurant from the other two further towards the rear retail. So if somebody pulls in on Albert Drive, they'll also have that opportunity as they drive down Albert Drive to see the three different entrances, right? So before they even get to the garage, it'll help them know where they're going after they park and walk. That, right? The other, the other value, I think, of the signage, the canopy signs for the two rear retail facilities, is that they are not on the street the way the restaurant is, right? So at least as one is driving along, they might be able to get a glimpse of the fact that there are other retail shops towards the rear, right? You have to, you can't, you got to say yes.
Yes. Thanks. That's all I had to say.
Right. There was a question about having, oh, let me ask you this. The lights, the facade lights, are they also of the same sort of glow, rear glow, or are they goosenecked?
No, the facade signs are painted on awning fabric and are illuminated with a gooseneck fixture that is, that has four heads for each of the facade... that is, that has four heads for each of the facade signs. And each of those heads has 150 lumens. And of course, a gooseneck, it comes off the building and then sort of hooks back and goes directly at the sign.
And so you don't anticipate any sort of outward glow from that?
No.
All right. And in terms of the fact that we've requested variances, and I guess I'll ask that of each of you. Is it your feeling that the variance is requested to allow these signs is a benefit to the zone plan, meaning to have a retail office zone in terms of its ability to help guide traffic, identify the retail stores and the like, from the retail perspective?
Yeah, as I stated, the eyes are moving faster along Witherspoon Street. And in order to capture people's attention, the signage is essential.
And Peter, from your perspective?
Yes, from a wayfinding perspective, they definitely will help. And especially, we have another exhibit we can show that is in color that might help, those little orange triangles that point in a direction.
Well, why don't, yeah, why don't you show that, so?
And if you could mark that, A4, exhibit A4. Thank you.
Yeah, just write that in the...
So you can, you can clearly see that it will take a lot of the guesswork out. And in wayfinding, that's what it's really all about. Just as quickly as you can and as simply as you can state where people need to go, it just eases traffic, it eases congestion and problems.
One of the things that we were asked to do by Sprab, which turned out to be a really good idea, the orange sail is the, sort of, the logo for Herring Properties. And when we first designed this, the orange, we had an orange sail on each of these and white arrows. And Sprab said, why don't you use the sail shape, use your orange sail shape as the arrows? And we've done that. So we took the, sort of, the corner sail off of each of these and turned them into arrows, which I thought was a really good suggestion from Sprab. The other thing I wanted to do, which required me to get up, and as you see, the sign background is black on all of these signs. And one of the issues about reducing the size, if you come over here and you start to see this sign, it's, it's different than a sign that's up on a pole, where if you make it a little smaller, it's still up high, right? This is on the ground. And I, you know, you're talking about somebody in a car or walking by. As this gets lower and lower, if you reduce the height of this sign, I think it starts to disappear. And if you make it narrower, you can't read the words, right? So we, we thought this was an optimum size for the least intrusion, but still have visibility. I mean, imagine if this sign was only this high and it was on the ground. You wouldn't be able to see it. So we, we sort of think that we found the right middle ground between Sprab's recommendation to make it a little bigger and staff recommendation to make it a little smaller. We think this sort of black face with some letters on it is going to be tasteful and is not going to be jarring at all, and will help people find their way. And I think, I think that's it, if there aren't questions.
All right. Board questions? Louise, go ahead.
I love wayfinding. So I think that, I think the sign plan looks good. I wanted to ask about the uplighting. I think that there was a, I think there is some uplighting planned. And the concern I have about that is the unintended consequence on whoever in whatever apartment might end up having it come straight into their...
Right.
So I was wondering whether we could just do with, make it with downward pointing signage?
Well, we have a diagram, I think, or that shows you the fixture. And the good news is we got it down to a 10-watt bulb. So it's going to barely even light the sign, let alone spill over.
But, but it's still necessary, even if it's going to barely...
The picture?
Is that what you're, picture? Is that the picture? Yeah, you have a, you have a bulb, yeah.
So maybe we can mark this one as, what are we up to, Jerry? A...
A5.
A5. I'll pass this around, but basically, you can see, it's a very, very modest fixture with a 10-watt bulb that's going to be focused on the sign, but is really not going to spill over.
One other question I noticed in the plan, that there's a tree that's said to be in bad shape. And I'm wondering if it's, and it'll be removed, supposed to be removed, will you replace it with another tree?
Yes, we actually put two additional trees on that were not on the plan, that were asked to be removed from the, because, from our original plan because of the gas line. And the landscaper showed up with them. So we ended up just putting them in front of 281. So you'll see on the, on the walkway in front of 281, we didn't have to do that, we just, we just planted them there. So those, those will grow. But, but in terms of the corner, probably it's, we would, we would consider that and do a tree to replace that.
I think it'd be great.
The only challenge there is, is the power lines are pretty heavy right there. So we'd have to, we have to come up with the right, right tree.
Yeah. And when you remove, when you cut down an existing tree, of course, the whole root system is there, and you can't just successfully plant just any kind of tree in the immediate vicinity of where that giant amount of rootage is, you know? So their attention should be paid. And I'm sure you have landscape experts that can make that call. But I think it'd be great to replace it with another one.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll do.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone?
Yeah. I just had a quick question, again, about the ground-mounted lighting. What's the distance between the fixture and the sign?
In the, in the monument sign, it's about a foot and a half.
The, the lights only a foot and a half from the sign?
Yeah. And, and the, the first way finding at Witherspoon and Albert is just across from the sidewalk, which is three feet, four, I don't remember, whatever, we're, on the other side of the sidewalk.
And that, that one, though, is, that one's aimed at the building.
Aimed at the building, yes. And we have, and this, the lights that we got approved and are in there now, the Joker lights, are, are two and a half times as, as light as that. And they're not that light. They're, they're 24 watts or, or 850 lumens versus, versus these.
Okay. And the planter sign, these lights will be in the planter as well?
In the planter.
That's the lights, the planter's big enough?
There were, there were lights in there, and the electricity is there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could I just ask a question about the orange directional signal? Have you tested that to see how visible that's going to be? I was actually on the committee when the hospital signs were put in, and I can tell you that we went through a number of colors and it finally came back to white. People just didn't seem to be able to, to really read the direction off the sign as they came down Witherspoon Street. And I just wondered about the orange.
Yeah, our experience has been, actually, it's very noticeable, more so than white. More, white, white we find fades in, the orange, in another place we have has been very, very noticeable. And so actually, we think it will be a good catching, catching element to, to direct, to direct people.
Anybody? Anything else? All right, well, I think we have one person in the audience that better at least open the meeting.
She's one of the owners.
Would you like to say something since you've sat here through all of that?
It's Jamie's daughter.
Well, even more so.
She totally supports the sign package.
Ah, but in this day and age, men do not speak for women anymore. All right. You've had your chance, you're sure. Okay, let me close the public portion.
I just had a question for the staff. Lee, in his memo, section 4.0 lists the series of recommendations from Sprab. Have those basically been, all of them been incorporated? Are there any Sprab recommendations that we want to make conditions, or have they all been dealt with?
Jerry, they've all been dealt with, except the recommendation to make the signs 31 inches. We left it at 24.
And that is, that is a question that the board has to decide on the size. So, any recommendations on the size? Anyone?
I'd like to leave them smaller rather than larger, that's the question. If the choice is...
24 instead of 31.
Right. The applicant's size rather than the Sprab size.
All right. There was a, I guess the professional staff had another size, even smaller, is that right?
I think it's important to have the signs, I think, just in general, I like smaller rather than larger. And I thought it was more important to have just the direction for the parking as opposed to the others. I think the applicants put on a good case, it's really up to the board. The town has traditionally limited signs. Part of the reason why there weren't any signs in the ordinance, I think, was the hospital had just gone through a complete package of signs. They removed all of them, so there is no rights back to them. And that was the problem. But I think it's really up to the board, at least at a planning level, I always look to say, can we reduce them? I think you can, but I understand why they're saying what they're saying, so I don't have a problem either way, and whatever the board decides is fine.
Ms. Omen?
Yeah, I, I think the signs are particularly tasteful in their sperriness. And if they were, if it were a different type, I think I would say, let's reduce it. But I guess I'm willing to take the applicant's notion of what is appropriate for that size. There aren't a lot of other signs around. I remember trying to find doctor's offices in those old buildings, and you wandered around for a long time before you finally got to the right place. So it's a complicated space. I mean, I have a hard time sort of visualizing a sign until it's in front of me, but I like the style of these a lot. And I think maybe the slightly larger sign may be appropriate, or at least not overwhelming in those spots.
So you're going for the...
I would go for this applicant's size.
24. Anyone else have any point of view on this? Jenny?
Well, I just also wanted to reiterate, I mean, to also say what Gail said, and I think the signs are understated. And I'm usually, as you know, I'm against signs a lot of times. And so, but in this, I do think that they were, they're very tasteful and understated, so I'm approving, I mean, I approve of them.
Just to be clear, the, the size, number two and three AB that Lee said could go a little smaller, those are the size of the foam core, the piece of foam core that, okay. Thank you.
I did have one question about the signage. How are the names going to be placed on the sign? Are they going to be engraved, or are they going to be like slots that are, that can be replaced?
The way we manufacture the signs would be two pieces of aluminum on either side and then box it in. And then we put message panels on top of that that are attached with tamper-proof screws. So if a tenant were to come and go, there's a special wrench you use to remove the screws, you take the panel off. And you don't deal typically with the fading of vinyl lettering that would then go on if it were to go directly to the sign. So it's message panels and vinyl lettering. All right, thanks.
Same plan.
Okay. Anyone else? So...
Just, just a clarification. On the number of variances that are necessary, we have the transformer. And then 13 variances for the 13 signs? Okay.
Plus the transformer.
Plus the transformer. So since you brought up the transformer, I know, Mr. Goldman, you referred to Merwick, and I remember that application. And there was all kinds of screening, you know, that was put in around the transformers. I didn't notice any attempt to dress this one up in any way.
It's, it's, you know, what's interesting about it is PSENG won't let you screen the roadside of it.
No.
So at Merwick, we were able to screen the back because it was facing the residences, right? And it was more important. Here, I mean, there is a bit of a landscaped area, as I recall, but you can't screen it from the road. They won't let you do it. So even at Merwick, it was, if you remember, it was like a three-sided screen to protect the residences. I think it's a little different when you have a sort of a commercial establishment. And the thing you would want to screen is the transformer from the road, and they won't let you do it. I mean, we, we'll look at it, and if there's a way to add some shrubbery around the back of it, I'm sure we'll do that.
I mean, the other thing that you see, and maybe people will object, but I've seen some very nicely painted transformers.
Public art project.
Yeah, as an art project, and I would...
We, I mean, from our standpoint, we wanted the transformer farther back. We had it planned for farther back. They required it 10 feet. We put it 10 feet, then we installed it, and they came back and said, it has to be 12 feet. So we had to move it. It was a complete disaster. But the, the planting, you know, was an extensively worked-out landscape plan in a small area. We absolutely want to do what we can to, to, you know, visibly hide it. So we followed the plan, and we, we, some of the plants have to grow, we just planted them, so they have to, have to grow. But there could be a little bit more higher ones on the front. There is a setback from them that the PSENG requires, so we have to respect that. But, you know, so we would do that, and if there's some painting that they would allow, we'd certainly, we'd certainly do that as well. Yeah. And we also, you know, we fought with the water company. They wanted to put a, a 10, a seven-by-15-foot water...
Hot box, they call it.
Hot box, concrete box.
This is, this is the new thing that's coming, and be ready. But the American Water wants this above-ground heated box for their valve systems that's like eight feet tall. Almost every commercial development I've done now, they want this new box. It's horrible.
Yeah, it's very, it's terrible. And they, and they, and that would take up our whole front lawn. So we fought with them, and then we, and we, they gave us a reprieve because, and we went up to their offices, and, and they gave us a reprieve because it is, it's an existing building.
Existing building. So I was going to say that as a college art major, I'm willing to paint the transformer if Jamie will let me.
Go for it.
That a condition.
Can we make that a condition? I'm kidding.
Okay. Is there any, any other comments at this point? Do you want to, can you sort of go?
Just, just, yeah. What's before the board is obviously an application for minor site plan approval, 13 sign variances, the transformer variances, and the following conditions. Is the tree dead or dying that Louise was talking about?
The tree is dead.
The tree's dead? Okay. So replacement of the dead tree? And I think I could catch...
It was a condition of the approval for the building...
It was a condition of the approval for the building that that tree be removed.
Oh, okay, so now we're going to require the?
It's already a condition of the, the approval for the, when they built this new building.
It's not part of this, right?
I don't recall if there was a replacement required.
But they already planted two trees.
Replace it, okay. And then add shrubbery around the transformer to the extent permissible, subject to landscape subcommittee review, and, and I guess somebody should review the, the caliper species of the, the tree that's being?
We're going to, you know, we're going to make it as nice as we can.
Yeah, well, I think it can be submitted to the engineering.
Engineering?
Not a lot of room there, but we'll do it within.
And then the last one is, Mr. Goldman, is to create a work of art out of the transformer?
Oh, yes, everyone, that definitely to be a condition, right?
We can even say for no charge. I always read my public.
I mean, do we, we, I take it the board isn't interested in having the applicant approach PSE&amp;G about painting the transformer, or are they?
Yes, I think.
You want to do that? Okay.
I think they should at least try.
Okay.
Seems like they want to, so we might as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
What color is it now? Green. So, so just so everyone knows, it's kind of mute green right now, it's not bright. There's a trade-off of painting it in some vibrant color, but.
I think the planting is the, is the, is the best.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, maybe we should, maybe we should backtrack on that one.
We'll forget that condition.
I mean, it's, it's actually in the applicant's interest to do something about that one way or the other, and I think we would certainly encourage that without being perhaps too specific.
But Mildred has other ideas for the color. All right, so those are the conditions. Does someone feel that they'd like to move this?
I'll move it.
Okay.
Second?
Second?
I'm allowed to second.
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Want to call the roll on this, please?
Yes.
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 Mr. Tex, already?
Yes.
Stravon?
Yes.
Zolman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Scanny?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can ask Jim when we're opening, next week, pal.
Next week? Wow. On Christmas or?
Good luck.
The signs won't be up yet.
Nobody's going to be able to pick it up.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Yes. Again, first?
Matt control.
She's really getting busy.
Okay, so move for second at all in favor of adjourning? Right. Well, Jerry, change for you.
Yeah.
Is that going to be more like?